Thank you, Mayor Johnson, and to the city council. It's a pleasure to be here today and tonight. I also have Bible study and prayer meeting right after my Sunday school meeting that's going on now, the teachers' meeting, so if I'm not here afterwards, then pray for me. Thank you.
It's gonna be a long night.
So, on this September the 11th, we have an honor to live in America and one of the greatest states in the country, so let us pray. Creator of all things, all good things that come from you, we give you praise for your mighty works and for your ability to even be with us in times when things are hard. And as we remember the lives of those we lost on September 11th, we also remember, oh, Lord, the families, the families that you left here to carry on the good work of Christ our Savior. And now, God, as we recognize the faith of all people, we ask, oh, God, that you bless those who are in need, in need of a council that is willing to look beyond midterm elections and personal issues and take care of your people. We thank you, God, that you would end wars and bring peace in our homes and in our communities. We pray for the men and women who serve, first responders in our community, and serve as protectors of our great city. Bless them, oh, God, and their families that they leave behind each day and return them home safely. Bless our city council, the state of America, and Florida, and, as Robert Jordan said, make it short. Amen.
Thank you, sir. If you will join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is approval of minutes of August 14th, 2018.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting on August 14th, 2018.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or corrections? I hear none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. We have no special recognitions or presentations. We're on item six, boards and commissions, Titusville Environmental Commission.
Yes, sir, currently there is one vacancy for an alternate member with a term to expire on 3 November, 2020. There's currently one application on file for your consideration. Mr. Jeffrey Solomon has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this commission.
Counsel? Go right ahead.
I would just say, I know Jeff, he's one of my neighbors. He is by profession an airplane pilot, but his degree is marine biology. And he is very involved in working on the lagoons, some of the lagoon product, projects. And he is very willing to do this, so...
If I may make a comment, I read his curriculum of VITI, and it's very impressive. I was very impressed, and we see a lot of them here, but that was particularly good. If you want to continue?
So, I'd make the motion to appoint Jeff Solomon as an alternate member to the Titusville Environmental Commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All of them, any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Planning and zoning commission.
Currently, member Aaron Fason has been absent from four of the last seven regularly scheduled meetings of the planning and zoning commission. For section 2-53, in part, any member of the entity created or appointed by the city council or the mayor or the city who fails to attend more than 50% of the regular or special workshop meetings of that entity within a six-month period shall automatically forfeit membership and appointment to that entity, and the chairman shall so inform the city council. Upon approval of the city council, the city council may authorize a member to miss more than three consecutive meetings or more than 50% of the regular, special, or workshop meetings during a six-month period. Based on the above, the memo has been sent to city council in order to satisfy the conditions of the code of ordinances and notify council of the attendance of the planning and zoning commission members. See attached memorandum. The attached also is the attendance record for the planning and zoning commission for 2018. Staff has spoken with Mr. Fason, and he has indicated that he will now resign from this particular board due to his increased work schedule. So with this...
No action, no action is needed.
What we'll need you to do is acknowledge receipt of the memo from the chairman and acknowledge the resignation letter from Mr. Fason.
Okay, do I have a motion to that effect?
So, yes. How about that?
That's just fine. That'll do it in this case. Do I have a second, yes? Okay, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Passes unanimously. Municipal Code Enforcement Board.
Accept the Municipal Code Enforcement Board semi-annual report as written. Mr. Tolson is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Have any questions for Mr. Tolson? He's already had a rough evening, let's leave him alone. I don't see any questions. Do I have a motion to accept the Municipal Code Enforcement Board semi-annual report as written?
I'd move to accept the Municipal Code Enforcement Board semi-annual report.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. North Brevard County Hospital District Board, if you will.
We have the presentation to be presented by Mr. Robert Jordan, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Big one. It's, it's, that's okay. Don't need that.
You already ate the cake.
She's greedy like that.
Is he 29? Robert, are you 29?
No, I am not 29, not even close to 29. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Johnson, members of the city council. I'm Robert Jordan, Vice Chairman of Parish Medical Center Board of Directors. It is my honor to present Parish Medical Center's semi-annual report, shortened. We have provided a written report that provides you with an update of Parish's accomplishments and significant ways we have given back to the community through sponsorship and other civic activities. Guided by our vision, healing families and healing communities, the parish board and every single parish care partner continues to keep patient safety at the heart of what we do. Devoting every day to keeping our community and our fellow men, women, and children healthy and safe means that every parish care partner, doctors, nurses, nursing assistants, techs, cooks, housekeeping, volunteers, every parish care partner is applying evidence-based leading safety practices in their daily healing work at home and out in the community. They are using proven continuous improvement methods, methods coupled with advanced technology and leading-edge clinical practices, and their results are irrefutable. From preventing sudden infant death syndrome, to eliminating ventilator-associated pneumonia, to eliminating surgical site infections, to name just a few. Tonight, I'd like to take the opportunity to talk about a very specific way in which PMC is guided by its vision, healing families and healing communities, when it comes to its patient safety commitments. The entire PMC board is very proud of the fact that Parish Medical Center continues to take a leadership position when it comes to patient safety and leading the way to zero preventable harm. And I know that when it comes to establishing community-wide priorities, this distinguished city council and the entire city organization shares the same commitment to safety. As such, there are two safety priorities we should share. They are hand washing and flu shots. I'm sure that's not what you expected me to say, right? Okay, I'm glad I got a response from someone, thank you. Think about the ripple effect of safety in every law enforcement officer, paramedic, firefighter, city service worker, and administrative personnel adopted just these two safety solutions side by side with parish. It is through safe practices such as hand washing and flu vaccinations that we safeguard the lives of those we have the honor to serve. Parish is proud to be recognized as the first five-star patient safety hospital in the nation and looks forward to working together on these shared community health and safety priorities. Believe it or not, that's the end of my report. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Jordan?
I'm very obedient.
Soon-to-be councilman Jordan?
Thank you very much.
So this is probably your last time of just doing that report.
Well, you never know.
For a while.
For a while.
For a while. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute, we have some comments here. Member Nelson?
I would be remiss if I did not thank Parish and Parish Medical Foundation for the donation to the Carter House, which hopefully is going to very shortly become a Boys and Girls Club. And I think that's probably a great win for that community, the community surrounding it, and a great win for our kids. I actually talked to a lady the other day. She heard me talking about it, she ran up to me and gave me a big hug. Did not lower the lady, which was amazing. And she, she said, "Thank you, thank you." She said she was taking her kids, driving them to MEMS every day to make sure that they had a safe place to, to be, and some guidance. And she said, "You, you just don't understand what this does for us, for our family and for other families." So, thank you, guys.
Okay, that's what we do.
That's what we do. Wait, one more.
One more. You don't want to be there long. I'm gonna make it short. You gave, you gave, hey.
I'm running.
You gave us extra time here. The last couple of reports that I've been able to hear, I, I just can't help but say the, the contribution that Parish gives, not just in the, the medical aspect, which is obviously what they're there for the most part, but everything from a track out at Sculptor to what you just spoke of, Member Nelson, to the Christmas activities that we were all able to be a part of with Elf and all that go with that. It's part of the spirit of this community that lives at Parish Medical Center. And that's the best way I can say it. You know, there's, you know, there's heartbeats in communities, and that's certainly a heartbeat in this community, and I appreciate that personally and as a member of this community. So, thank you.
I have to say, you know, since you all are bragging on Parish, I've been there a long time, and I will tell you, the, the character is, is there from those who clean the floors to those who cut you up. It's amazing to me, in a good way, for sure.
I hope you're talking about doctors now.
Yeah, the doctors, yeah. But it's, it's amazing to me that, you know, this, Parish has been around a long time, and the focus of Parish has always been healing families and healing communities, and that goes beyond just the medical, as you said. We have to be part of the community, and, and we try to be good stewards of the monies that we certainly receive, and we're happy to be part of this community, for sure. Can I sit down now? Thank you.
Thank you.
You wore short.
I need a motion to accept the North Brevard County Hospital District Board's semi-annual report as presented.
What you said. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Petitions and requests from the public, if there's anybody that would like to speak? No, not you, Robert, you gotta stay down. You've said enough now. I see no one stepping forward, so we will go to the consent agenda.
Okay, Mayor, we have no cards from the public on consent, so does council want to pull any of the consent agenda items before I read them for the record?
No.
Okay, so there, there are three resolutions in here, so bear what I recommend after I complete the reading is just do a roll call for all of them.
Okay.
Consent agenda item 8A, approved resolution 23, 2018, authorized the mayor to execute the subordination agreement between the Florida Department of Transportation and the City of Titusville. Consent agenda item 8B, approved resolution 24, 2018, that revises resolution number 40, 2009, which updates the schedule of advertising fees of certain land development applications and other activities. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the distribution of the Edward Merle Memorial Justice Assistant Grant countywide in the amount of $147,757 for FY 2017-18 to be used for Brevard County in their prisoner transport program. Consent agenda item 8D, approve advisability to amend the multi-high-density residential R3 zoning district to prevent elevated cantilever decks or balconies to project into setbacks adjacent to the major water bodies or common areas. Consent agenda item 8E, adopt resolution 25, 2018, supporting temporary closure of State Road for Astronaut High School Homecoming Parade. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the renewal of medical reinsurance coverage, subject to the approval of the FY 19 budget with Cigna to cover medical reassurance costs at an estimated annual premium of $557,000, $555,886. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the renewal of medical plan administrative services agreement with Cigna for a period of 1 October, 2018 through 30 September, 2019, in the amount of $262,233. There is a zero change from the current ASO fees. Consent agenda item 8H, approve amendment 1 to contract CR Victor 17 Bravo 005, changing the name and address of business link company located at 1014 North IH 35, Austin, Texas, to CSG Systems Incorporated located at 18020 Burt Street, Elkhorn, Nebraska, 68022, and authorize the mayor to execute this amendment. Consent agenda item 8I, approve the award of contract subject to resolution and terms by the city manager and city attorney to Santa Currys Construction Incorporated of Merritt Island, Florida, in the amount of $29,997 for the downtown connector trail Julia and Nevins Court Safety Improvements, B1881B053, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Consent agenda item 8J, approve the renewal of all lines of insurance coverage for FY 19 at an estimated total premium of $725,663, which is a decrease from last year's cost of $746,932, and authorize the city manager to put all necessary instruments in place for this renewal.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, we have a roll call vote on this, please?
We need a motion.
I've moved to approve consent agenda items A through J.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Ordinance is a second reading, sir.
9A is a resolution, it's not a, an ordinance, and I believe city manager's gonna address this item.
Yes, sir, the applicant has requested this item be tabled to the regular city council meeting on 9 October, 2018, to allow the Board of Adjustment Appeals to consider the variance requested that would render and vacate this request unnecessary. What happened is the BAA tabled this item to gather additional information, so the applicant has requested that this council also tabled this item.
Can I have a motion to that effect?
I'd move to table right-of-way application number 1-2018, request to vacate a public right-of-way to the meeting on, where'd it go?
9 October.
9 October 18.
October 9th, 2018.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Ordinance is 10A, first reading?
Yes, this is ordinance number 44, 2018, amending section 2178 of the code of ordinances. Ordinance number 44, 2018, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending section 2178 of the code of ordinances by providing how contract awards are decided when more than one firm qualifies under the local preference policy, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
This is your first reading, and Jesus is in the back. Should you have any questions of staff prior to your second, final reading?
Counsel, are there any questions? I see none. It's first reading, so there's no vote. Go to the next item. Old business, there is none. New business, there is none. Petitions and requests from the public present. Would anybody like to speak? Jesus, you coming up here? No. We'll wait.
If I could, sir, I'd, I'd like to pull our new IT director up to the, to the dais to...
You're on the spot now.
...introduce yourself, since we are running a little ahead of schedule, so...
My intention was just to sneak in and watch the board meeting.
You, you can't trust them, don't...
Yeah. Now I know that. So my name is John Sellers, I'm on day six as IT director here, and it's a, I'm a lifelong Titusville resident, and I've been working, I was IT director for Brevard County for 10 years, Seminole County for the last three years. I lived here in Titusville, and opportunity came open to serve my local community, so I thought it'd be a lot of fun to take it up and spend a few years trying to bring to the City of Titusville whatever I can, so...
Great. Any, any questions?
This is an absolute win, we're so lucky to have him on board, and I know the commute was long, but we're glad that your commute now brings you to City Hall.
Yes, 11 minutes, it's wonderful.
I live, I live closer.
Oh, good for you, yeah.
Welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, no petitions and requests. Mayor and council report, you have my report. I will, however, I guess at this point, well, yeah, I'll do it at this point. The city manager and I met with both Mr. Mark Mullins and Board Member Christie Misty Belford last Tuesday, and you should have received a lot of information on the meeting. Personally, I, I feel a lot of things were explained, and I'm, I'm content with it, but certainly some of you have some experience, maybe that you have further questions? Is that the case, or do any of you have...
I, I felt better after I read your report, because I really felt like our, our kids were not getting the same amount of attention that the kids in the other areas of the county were getting. I did talk to Misty, and we talked to Steve Kane over at Space Tech about the idea of bringing in a, a space technology kind of program. They do have the curriculum, they're willing to work with Misty in getting that set up. And my understanding is the curriculum's free, so they would have to pay for a teacher, and that would be about it. And I think that would be something that would be really great for our area. So, Misty, when I left, Misty and Steve were working on it, so I'm hoping that continues.
I, I think that they were very cooperative and, and gave us quite a bit of information, as I said, and, and the spirit of cooperation was, was there at all times, so I, I think we accomplished what we, what we wanted to do.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir.
I think I'd be remiss, since I had a little bit of a say the last time that was brought up, and having been teaching in the north area for 35 years, I said then, and I'll say now, that I think the north area schools, teachers, and staff do an excellent job. I think that there are certainly, and I have had my say with some people in the school board area, over the years, that sometimes I think things did slip to the populated areas of Melbourne and to the south. But overall, I think that they work hard to balance us. I, I do think that, and I said when I was in conclusion, I do feel like Mr. Mullins, Dr. Mullins perhaps, I'm not sure. Dr. Mullins, I want to make sure I get that right, is somebody who I'm very happy about being our superintendent. And I have said, and I'll ease through this, that I feel like there are sometimes superintendents that, that go from superintendent position to superintendent position or whatever, and our professional superintendents around the nation. Mark Mullins is a Brevard Public Mark Mullins is a Brevard Public Schools person, and he has worked his way up from various levels, principalships, et cetera. He knows what Brevard County is about, he knows about the north area. I've, you know, I have known Mark for a long time, and I feel very confident we're in good hands in Brevard Public Schools, and I'm so glad that you had the opportunity to, to speak with him on behalf of Titusville, and I feel very comfortable, and I'm just very pleased about where we're at with, with our new superintendent.
Thank you, and I feel that's, that everything you said is, is correct. I met him the first time when we had the meeting. Interestingly enough, I think we had two meetings that we went to of other things, and I met him two more times, I got to talk to him a little more offline, I guess, and he's a very nice, competent, cooperative person, and competent, I'm sure, very competent. Yes?
Can I sort of interject here, just because you brought Dr. Mullins up, and I was wondering if the city manager had gotten any, any additional information on the program, the interns?
We are working with them, with the school board on that, but it's not as simple as it was you were led to believe.
It sounded really simple when they told me.
Nothing, nothing in government or school boards is simple.
But we'll, we'll update Council once we get sufficient information to provide that to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Very good, thank you. City managers report.
Yes, sir. We have just two information items, the fixed asset disposal and the city manager's evaluations, and we have the special meetings coming up this week on Thursday at 5:30, will be your final budget public hearing, and then we get into the fall season with the Board and Commissions Recognition Dinner, and our first conservation land use PD zoning workshop in, at the end of November, subject to your questions.
Any questions for the city manager? I see none. City attorneys report, sir, anything to add?
Yes.
Counsel, does anybody want to speak?
Just one thing. We have time. No, I'll be quick. And I know that you noted it, but I just thought I'd say something. I thought the 9/11 ceremony this morning that Mayor was at-
Yes, sir.
-and I was at with the mayor, was outstanding.
Absolutely.
I thought it was well done, and brought into perfect view what it was all about. A day we'll never forget. I also wanted to bring up, and I think we'd really be remiss, especially being who we are and where we're at, thoughts and prayers to the people of North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia, the whole area, and, you know, they, they got a tough one coming, and thinking about them and praying for them at this time.
Absolutely, and thank you for saying that. I think that's all we have, is there anybody else who would like to bring up anything? If not, I'm reaching for this real quickly. If, if not, I think we have a new record.
We have never done this.
I will declare this meeting adjourned.